Shut that door behind us. Is that what you're doing? Working the room. All right, we've called the meeting to order, state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of city council present. And let me just say that before we get started, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that this past week has not been a very good week for this city and its family. Not only did we have a police officer become seriously injured only a day after he was actually pinned and took office and is in the hospital, and I was talking to the chief earlier, he's recovering. He had a stent put in his aorta. They feel like they have the bleeding stopped in his colon. He's still got to have surgery on a crushed pelvic. So, you know, our thoughts and prayers need to be with Officer Lewis and his family as he goes through what will be a very long rehabilitation for him. Then on that same day, our Assistant Police Chief, Michelle Barazil's husband, was fatally killed in Houston. You all probably read about it or saw it on the news. He was a captain of the Houston Fire Department. He was a fireman in Houston. I don't think they ever really said that much about the fact that his wife was our Assistant Fire Chief. But anyway, he was killed in a bicycle accident. So, you know, it was a tough, it was a tough week for us in this city. And so our thoughts and prayers need to be with Michelle, the two children. They do have two small, elementary aged children. I think the services, I think City Managers that are going to be Tuesday.
Wednesday.
Our Wednesday visitation is Tuesday. So, you know, we never think about this, that our public safety guys, both our police officers and our firefighters, we think about them getting shot, we think about them getting involved in another way, but we never think about losing them in an accident like this. So, you know, I want you all to keep them in your prayers and thoughts. They're going to need, they're going to need a lot of prayers and thoughts, especially Michelle and her family and going through what they're going through. It's a tragedy. So, you know, I want us to just, you know, pause and give some silent prayer for both of those families. Thank you. Officer Matt Rias is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
To flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to now administer the oath of office to myself and Judge Schumaker, our District Judge Schumaker here to administer the office to me as Mayor and to Missouri as Councilman at large, and then we'll bring our newest councilperson up.
Will you each raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye and give your name.
Aye, Alan Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of office of Mayor.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
All right, now, Chris, are you ready for this?
Raise your right hand. Aye, Chris Preston.
Aye, Chris Preston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of this office of Councilmember at large, position two.
The duties of this office of Councilmember at large, position two.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to my best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve. Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
To God be the glory. As a proud product of this community, I want to let you all know that it's only by you all's support that I'm here this evening, and I'm ready to get to work for the City of Missouri City. God bless us all. Thank you.
Do have a couple of proclamations that I need to read. Seem like we always have a few. Anyway, this one says, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, and public buildings, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Alan Owen, on behalf of the council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th this week as National Public Works Week in the City of Missouri City, and I call upon all the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officially makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And Scott, you have anybody else here?
We have plenty of you, Mayor.
Oh, where are they? Bring them up. And I say this every year, we see our police officers, we see our firefighters on the street, and we know what they do, and we stop and congratulate them. How many of you have ever stopped and congratulated our public works people for the work that they do in the trenches, in the ditches, you know, cleaning the streets, doing all those things, fixing our streetlights and doing all those things? Take time and just stop and holler out the window and say thank you for what they're doing, because that's the only recognition these guys get, really. They get a paycheck, but having you pat them on the back and tell them you appreciate what they do means more to them than that paycheck. So, thank you guys for what you do. I like these things.
You collect them.
Back up.
You collecting?
Yes, sir. Even more, doesn't it? That's all he does, is collect these.
I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for the recognition, and really and truly, it's the guys behind me and the rest of the public works group, including one of our newest members who didn't come up. There, come on, Eche, on that. But since 1960, the American Public Works Association has sponsored National Public Works Week across North America and Canada for the purpose of energizing the public and educating the public on the importance of public works. This year's theme is Building for Today, Planning for Tomorrow, and represents the classic idea of stewardship embodied by the profession of public works and the professionals that practice it. Focusing on communities, building points out the day-to-day aspect of public works that is quality of life, while the planning side references the sustainable practices that ensure the quality of life for future generations. And just to touch on what the mayor said, I'd like to thank all the members of public works group for everything they do on a daily basis. They're the ones that deserve the recognition.
This proclamation says that whereas the bicycle is an economically healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Missouri City's scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Missouri City and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Missouri City's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic, health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve the citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Missouri City, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic, safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. Now therefore, I, Alan Owen, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month in the City of Missouri City, and urge all of our citizens to join me and Councilman Smith, who rides every day, in this special observant. You want to say something, Mr. Bicyclist?
I would like to thank for you two and the City of Missouri City in joining in and celebrating National Bike Month. And I think this is part of an overall plan as far as Missouri City is concerned to have, to enhance our bicycle plan. With that, I mean that we will hopefully, in not too near the future, that we'll be able to bike anywhere in the city, especially towards significant places like the different parks and the different venues that we have. Also, I want to use this as a time to do a commercial, is that we will have a bicycle ride on October the 4th. Hopefully, we have a significant amount of people from all over this area joining in on our bike ride. But Mayor, I thank you. A second bike ride, yes. But Mayor, I thank you very much, and I thank council for helping and supporting this.
Thank you. Chris, come here. I'm going to break from the normal meeting schedule, and I know there's a lot of people here that probably came to wish Chris good luck, and Chris, we'll give you an opportunity to go ahead and shake some of these people's hands and thank them for coming.
Take some pictures.
And take some pictures for those people who wanted to. We should have had a bicycle in here.
Then you wouldn't want me to wear those.
You'd have to wear the hat, you know, and the jersey. And his tights.
Do you wear those things?
I've seen those babies.
It's not a pretty sight.
It really isn't a pretty sight. Well, thank you. I know.
All right, fun's over, go to work. And I'll give people an opportunity to leave unless you just want to stay and sit through a boring council meeting.
Thank you, man. I did. He was encouraged. He was encouraged. He'll be back.
If visiting, you're going to have to speed them up.
I know. Let them visit. She wants to speak to it. Hey, Buck, good seeing you. You all right? Oh, I am. It's not a public hearing, but I guess she can speak. She can speak from the public, but not at the agenda.
All right, I need.
First thing you need to.
Where's my police officers when I need them? We've got no police officers in.
I think they're stuck in the back.
Yeah, there's two of them. They're stuck in the crowd.
Yes.
Well, they need to take, they need to take control of the crowd. Where are they?
They're in the back. I mean, they're all the way out.
No, that's not one of ours.
No, there's two of ours back there.
There's two of them out there.
Yep, they're standing out in the hall.
Well, there's Mike, there's the chief. Talk to him.
Hey, chief? Chief? Move them out, shut the door. Let them take, let them go downstairs. We got a meeting we got to conduct. Okay. That's why I did it, give them an opportunity to leave. Otherwise, they'd be here all night. Second row.
Banks?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, Randy.
I could ask Carol. She has signed it. Well, that's what I was.
You got another public comment person, right?
Yeah, I've got another public comment. All right. We'll get the door closed and get things quietened down, and there we go. Item four on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council about an item. I have two people that want to speak. First, Kevin. Where'd Kevin go?
He changed the man.
Where's Kevin? Kevin? All you got to do is state your name and your address for the record, and remember that we cannot respond to any of the comments that you make.
Understand. Kevin Pever, 11839 South Perry Avenue, Houston, Harris County. But we are in Missouri City, and we're in Fondren Park. I know that my council member can't respond back to me, but there's a problem that's been there since way before our council member came along. The owner of the property that borders on Fondren and Cathy, and I can't remember, it's Hampton or Hutchins, stays overgrown almost all the time until the city calls or sends a letter and says, "Come cut the grass." Well, right now, it's about this tall, and I'm 6'3", so I'm guessing it's at least four feet, and I'm pretty sure that's over the city's requirement to come out and cut the grass. I have yours and three other council members' cellphone numbers on my phone. I used to have another council, well, two other council members that are no longer here. And when I had a problem, they'd say, "Well, it's not in my district, but I'll take care of it." I know the mayor of the City of Houston, and I know four of the council members there. I have their cellphones. I don't live in Houston. My mother does. If I have a problem in Houston, I just call and tell them. "Hey, here's the problem, can you do something?" They don't tell me. Call down and leave a message, and my secretary will do something about it. I just don't know why that can't happen here. If you live in the district and you drive by there and you see that grass is this tall, that's probably out of code. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And I think we're noting the address, are we not?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Avon Larson.
9A, not this. No, no, thank you.
All right. Let's see. Staff reports, are there no staff reports? The consent agendas or a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilman Emery made the motion, Mayor President Tim White made the second. All those in favor? Motion to, you can vote, Chris.
I can.
Even though you weren't here. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. 7A is zoning public hearing. There are none. 7B.
7B, one, an ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, continuing Article 7 of Chapter 74 of the Missouri City Code, continuing the rules and regulations pertaining to the standards of care for certain elementary-age recreation programs operated by the City of Missouri City, providing for appeal, providing for severability.
And this is the first of two readings. Is there a motion to approve this on the first reading?
So will.
Mayor President Tim White made the motions, or a second?
I'll second because I want to hear what's going on with this.
Okay. Second by Councilman Smith. Yes, we'll discuss it? Discuss? Yes, sir.
This proposed ordinance continues the standards of care previously adopted for elementary-age recreation programs operated by the City of Missouri City. State law requires that programs that operate at least two hours a day, three or more days a week, for children aged five to 13 be licensed by the state. However, state law exempts programs operated by municipalities, provided municipality adopts annually a standard of care for programs after a public hearing. Staff has asked that the existing ordinance be continued as written accordingly. These existing standards are presented to council and the public for hearing and consideration. Staff recommends the approval of the ordinance.
Any questions? Councilman Smith? So, and our standards basically mirror the state's requirement, do they not?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's just a matter of us saying that we're doing it as a municipality, but we're adhering to what the state requirement is, too.
Correct.
And we exceed that, I think, in most cases.
We already have this in place. This is being done so you can do your summer camp. It's one of the reasons.
Yes, sir.
And so we did it last year, and we've done it previously.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any rough numbers of how many kids that, you know, we provide these types of services to and, you know, recreational?
Yeah, our summer camp served up to 60 kids last summer. Through Christmas breaks, we, or spring break camps or winter break camps, we average anywhere from 12 to 15 on those smaller events. And then, that's not including the kids that come out and play basketball, use the tennis courts, all those type of things.
But we have room for more?
Yes.
Okay.
We're actually putting this one at the old community center.
Right.
To allow us to continue to take in more senior at the recreation center and free play time in the basketball court. So, this camp's being moved to the old.
Just the next door.
Community center.
Not that way. It's that way, yeah.
This is a side thought. Caroline, during the summer, you have other entities like dance, studios, and you have boxing, and you have other type of fitnesses. And during the summer, they bring in kids as well. They have summer programs for kids. Are they required to operate under the same kind of standards, especially if they're?
They certainly may. There, the state does prescribe who must be licensed, and if they fall under the requirements of the state licensing, they must secure their own licensing through the Department of Licensing.
Is it incumbent on us to manage this, or is it just the state?
No, that's managed by the State of Texas.
Okay.
This only applies to the specific municipal program of ours.
Any other questions? Now, we'll vote. There was a motion by Councilman White and a second by Councilman Smith. All those in favor? Motion to carry as opposed? You vote?
Yes.
Item 7B2.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, creating Reinvestment Zone Number 13, encompassing an approximate 5.4676 acre tract of land located southwest of the intersection of Buffalo Run and Fondren Road in the City of Missouri City, Texas, making related findings and providing for severability.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tax abatement is a very successful tool that the city has used for economic development purposes for a number of years. Since 1999, the city has undertaken 12 current tax abatements. Of those 12, nine are presently active. Of those nine, the amount of assessed value that was promised was $152,800,000. What that turns into is $330,000 of abatement, excuse me, $876,000 of total value in tax value. What we've realized is $182 million. Even when you provide a tax abatement, you still collect revenue. And you also generate revenue for the school district in addition to what the city collects. So, the average abatement of the ones that are out there is about 62%. So, of $182 million that is on the ground, the city collects $400,900, even though it has a tax abatement in place. And because the company has, companies have delivered more than they've promised, you're actually $67,000 more than, in collections than you were promised. Tonight, we have before you the first step in the. Tonight, we have before you the first step in the creation of a reinvestment zone. To be able to offer tax abatement to recruit companies to the community, you must first create a reinvestment zone. So, tonight, we have a public hearing to create one for a company called Cabalco. It is a company that we're looking to bring to the community that would invest about eleven and a half million dollars in our community in Lakeview Business Park. We create approximately twenty-five to thirty jobs over a ten-year time period. When you look at that project, what you'll be, if, if this proceeds past the public reinvestment zones, public hearing and the reinvestment zone creation, the tax abatement that we'll be bringing forward is fifty percent on real property improvements only. What that means is of the value, eleven and a half million dollars of value that's created, you would still collect, even during the abatement, almost thirty-eight thousand dollars per year. This is a project that but for test. You are foregoing a stream of revenue that you would otherwise not get in order to collect revenue in the short term of thirty-eight thousand dollars, in the long term, at least sixty-six thousand dollars per year. What we'd like to do is recommend that we have a public hearing and then move forward to the second reading and then bring an agreement forward to you. Thank you.
And Joe, let me just point out to people that, that may not be aware of this. In cities like Sugar Land and Pearland and Pasadena and places like that, they have a penny of their sales tax that they can use for economic development. And the city of Missouri City, since we belong to Metro.
That's correct.
Our penny goes to Metro and we have nothing left for economic development. And I said this before, you know, and Sugar Land can write a five million dollar check to get, you know, uh, men it made to move to Sugar Land. We don't have that ability. This is a tool and one of the very few tools that we have to work with. And I think there's a misunderstanding sometimes by some people that think we just give everything away, we don't collect anything. The fact that they put fifty million dollars more on the ground than what they promised was a big thing, but the fact that we collect a half a million dollars in taxes is a huge thing because I can tell you that in Lakeview Business Park, it was a golf course. It was zone recreational. We were getting very little taxes at all. It was a wooded area. So, you know, I think people need to understand that this is a tool that we have to work with, that, uh, we've been very successful. Lakeview Business Park is full now, or will be full. Uh, our other business park is probably gonna be full. This has created jobs, it's created, in those two business parks, over five hundred million dollars worth of new stuff on the grounds for this city that we never, that we really never had before. So, I, I think it's great that, that we talk about what tax abatement's about. I think the point that you raised that probably has been overlooked is that the school district doesn't give abatement.
That's correct.
They get a hundred percent of their tax value on these things. So, they're getting a hundred percent of over five hundred million dollars worth of stuff that we put on the ground in eighteen months that wasn't there before. And, and I think that's a huge thing for our school district, so. The county, the water district and the city are the only ones that abate anything out of the deal. And we all do that in a partnership. We couldn't do it without the county. We couldn't do it without the water district partnering with us to, to do that. And we need to congratulate them for helping us do that, so. Thank you for what you're doing to go out and find these businesses.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Move to that.
Sir.
Okay. Been a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt, second by Councilman Smith. Is there any discussion? This is the first of two readings, so we have an opportunity. Not, we'll vote, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item eight are appointments, there are no appointments at this time. Item nine are authorizations. Nine A is consider electing a mayor pro tem. Ms. Larson, you want to address this issue?
Inside, inside, inside.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to you, Mr. Preston. Mayor Pro Tem Wyatt on your reelection, Mayor Owen on your reelection. It seems very fitting today that earlier, the three of you took an oath of office to uphold the laws of the United States Constitution and the laws of the state of Texas. And I would like to ask, as you consider, um, electing a new mayor pro tem, to consider the private message that I received today from the current mayor pro tem. The current mayor pro tem sent me a private Facebook message today that I would like to share with you and ask that you consider it. Why are you so interested in a city you don't live in? You can't vote in Missouri City and you pay no Missouri City property tax. Yet you can't drive home to Sienna Plantation without using some Missouri City service that you don't pay for. Please tell us why you hate a city you don't live in. You hate us so much that you would spend your own money to campaign against our bond election. That's some serious hating. And so I would like to ask that you consider the words of the current mayor pro tem to a resident of a Missouri City SIP code and, um, ask how might those comments reflect on the residents of Missouri City as well as the Missouri City City Council? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, at this time, I will entertain, uh, nominations for mayor pro tem. I would ask that there be a nomination and a second. And we'll move on until we have all the nominations and seconds in place and then we will vote, so. Are there nominations?
I would, uh, like to nominate, uh, Robin Ellicott for mayor pro tem.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there other nominations?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate, uh, Councilman Smith for mayor pro tem. Considering, uh, the experiences of both council members and considering the fact that Councilman Smith has been on council for a considerable period of time.
Okay. Is there a second? Are there other nominations?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Jerry Wyatt.
Okay. Is there a second for that nomination? All right. So, we have?
No, Mayor, I have a nomination.
Yes, you have a nomination.
Yes, I do. I'd like to nominate Floyd Emery for the mayor pro tem.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All right. Are there any other nominations? I think everybody's been nominated, haven't they? Chris, you have a nomination?
Don't feel left out, Chris.
All right. If there are no other nominations, there was a nomination by Councilman Emery, seconded by Councilman Ford for, uh, Robin Ellicott. Then there was a motion by Councilman Emery.
No.
No, I'm sorry, by, by, by Councilman Ellicott. Is that right? By Councilman Ellicott for Councilman Emery, seconded by Councilman Wyatt. Is that right? And no other nominations. So, we will take, uh, Councilman Emery's nomination of Robin.
And I'm away from the table.
Huh?
And I'm away from the table.
You're not gonna vote?
Can't stain, so I have to be away from the table.
Okay. Goodness gracious. This is like a crossword puzzle. Are you away from the table too?
Yes.
Okay. We got Councilman Smith and Councilman Wyatt away from the table. So, so that leaves, that leaves Councilman Emery's nomination for Councilman Ford. I mean, for, uh, for, for Councilman Ellicott, seconded by Ford, right? Am I right?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
I believe so.
And we've got two away from the table, so. All those in favor of Councilman Ellicott? Is that right? Yeah. Councilman Ellicott. All those in favor, Councilman Ellicott? Huh?
I can vote on two?
Yes, you can vote on yourself. Okay. Did you vote?
Yes.
Did you vote?
Yes.
You did? Is that them?
Uh, yes.
So, there's one, two, three, four. That's all it takes. There's only seven, so. Councilman Ellicott's it. Yeah, there's four. After a vote, that's all. All right.
Let's move forward.
Oh, goodness, that's, uh.
Mayor, can I ask for an official vote? Um, I just need to have those who voted for Councilmember Ellicott, um, I, for the record.
Ford, Ellicott, Emery and?
Preston.
And Preston.
Okay.
That's it. Yeah, that's four you need. All right. Moving on. Now you guys know why I wanted to rotate mayor pro tems. Item nine B. Is to consider authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between the city of Missouri City and the city of Stafford for the sale of a worn-out two thousand Great All XL forty-one hundred rubber tire excavator main unit.
Very counsel, uh, the Great All, which is a piece of heavy equipment we utilize for road repairs and ditch maintenance in the city of Missouri City, has reached the end of its service life. Uh, originally, we were gonna auction the Great All. We received interest from the city of Stafford, uh, for purchasing it. We have come to a fair market value between the city of Stafford and the city of Missouri City of forty thousand dollars and we're asking for the authorization of an interlocal agreement for this, uh, sale to the city of Stafford.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Councilman, I think, I don't know who did, Ellicott? And seconded by Emery, is that right? I heard it right? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine C, consider authorizing city staff to negotiate and execute a contract for delinquent tax collection services. Yes, sir.
Mayor, members of council, the current tax collection services agreement was sent out for public solicitation with the city issuing a public notice for requests for statement of qualifications. The city received two requests for statement of qualifications for delinquent tax collection responses from Linebarger, Gogan, Blair and Sampson, who is being represented by, uh, Mr. Chip Sutton tonight, and also Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott, LLP, being represented by Mr. Mike Swerka. And staff committee comprised of myself, director of finance, Wes Vella, city attorney Caroline Kelly and asset manager Denise Chue. Independently reviewed the statements of qualica-, qualification for each firm. Compilation of the staff committee member scores was made, providing a ranking of the firms. Based on the final scoring, staff recommended to award the contract to Linebarger, Gogan, Blair and Sampson. The city's current delinquent attorney's services are provided by Linebarger, Gogan, Blair and Sampson. Most recent renewal of contract was in July first, two thousand and ten, for a one-year term with additional four-year extensions. Their fee, fees are fifteen percent of all taxes, penalties and interest, subject to terms of this contract collected and paid to Fort Bend collector during, uh, tax collector during the term of the contract. Then on, uh, May fourteenth, we met with the city council's long-range planning committee and, uh, to deliberate and provide them with information on this. And, uh, they, uh, did so and then also interviewed and requested interview, uh, representatives from Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott. And, uh, I believe they have a recommendation, uh, themselves, if you want to, sir.
Uh, yeah, after deliberation, uh, and listening to, uh, all of the, uh, the findings that you had and also, uh, listening to and interviewing Purdue, we took a vote. Uh, the vote was two to one to retain Linebarger. So, that was a recommendation of the, uh, of the council. Council committee.
Well, the, the committee not only considered the fact that, uh, uh, in, in interviewing Purdue Brandon, which they were quite helpful and very informative and, uh, providing a lot of information, even to the point they honestly said they may be talking themselves out of the contract. For example, they were with Rosenberg for thirty years. Some of the other cities that they're with, they've been for a long, long time. One of my considerations is the fact that, uh, uh, the staff wouldn't be working with two different firms. Uh, these, both firms are real close. Quantitative, they could not tell us whether they could collect any more money. They felt they could, but they could not actually say they could. And, uh, and the tax collection we are receiving is, is, is pretty tight. And even Purdue Brandon acknowledged, noticed that. And so, that was why I voted to retain the firm that we, we have.
Mayor, council, um, I was on that committee, I voted against the current process. I did look at the evaluation that we had under the long-range committee. And, and like Councilmember Wyatt said, that it became right to the wire. Uh, there were some recommendations that was, uh, some eval, evals that, uh, folks had made. It kinda went up one or two here and there. It really was a close call and, and I, and I felt, you know, competition creates opportunities, uh, within our city and within the vendors that comes in. And looking at this, um, Purdue and Linebarger, they both are great companies, I have no doubt. But I, I feel that we needed to, uh, we've been having this, uh, even for the court collections and everything else. I felt that competition will bring in a little bit more advantage and opportunity. So, I felt that, uh, it should go to Purdue, Brandon, Fielder and Collins.
Okay. So, uh, same, that was your motion?
Yes.
Did you make the motion?
Second.
You made the second? Uh, and your motion is to accept staff's recommendation and the long-range planning committee's recommendation? All right, we'll vote. Then, uh, the recommendation was to retain the contract with, um, Linebarger, is that right?
That's right.
And we'll vote. So, all those in favor of retaining the contract with Linebarger? Okay? And then the sec-, the, the other motion is to go with Purdue?
Correct.
We have a vote on Purdue Brandon?
No, we just.
Well, I mean, huh?
A motion to.
Well, I mean, we can if he wants to. I mean, they didn't vote either way, so.
If you wanna poll the council, you can do that.
Poll the council. And that's what I'm doing. So, you, so you've got a record vote? Of those three? Is that right, Chris? That he, huh? Did you not vote?
No, I did not vote.
Did not vote?
No vote.
And the record would show that, that, yeah, he did not vote.
But he backed away from the table.
Wait.
Yeah.
So, what's?
The, the motion was to accept staff's recommendation of Linebarger. And the vote was four in favor of Linebarger. And then there were two in favor of Purdue Brandon with?
Chris away from the table.
Chris away from the table. Okay? That's what it is. Thank you. All right. Item ten, ordinance is ten A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, adopting an update to the basic plan of the Fort Bend County Interjurisdictional Emergency Management Plan, repealing all ordinances or resolutions in conflict therewith, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Now, this is the same emergency plan, I guess, that we had once before that, uh, we weren't real comfortable with because it had some language in it that gave the county judge the ability to lock us up in jail if we violated any of the parts of that plan. But I, I, and visiting with not only other cities and, and Fort Bend County who got the same plan, with the exception of Sugar Land, who's doing their own deal. I, I feel a little more comfortable in the fact that this is actually law. It's in the, it's in the state mandate that it gives a county the right to do it whether we accept the policy or not. So, it's my recommendation that we now go ahead and sign this, uh, basic plan and, and enter into this, um, management plan with the county.
And, and I move that we adopt this?
Yeah. And we got hurricane season coming up here in a couple of weeks, and...
Yes, sir, we do.
I don't wanna be without it, right?
I don't either.
Matter of fact, we're gonna tour the, we're gonna tour the hurricane tracker tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go down to Ellington, and I'm gonna actually tour the tracking plane that they use, and Judy's gonna be with us. So, is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Come on, Chris, that'd be a good one for you. There you go. All right.
The other important part to...
Let's get you on record here, man.
Other important part of this, we participate, or we don't get reimbursed.
Well, that's true, and we don't wanna have our own plan. Sugar Land is large enough that they decided that they would do their own, and I'm not sure what Stafford has decided to do. They were talking about going with Houston, but Houston has that same language in it.
Yes, sir, they do.
In their agreement, so it really doesn't accomplish.
I believe at this point, Stafford has decided they too are going to adopt the county plan.
Yeah. Very good. So, there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt, and a second by Councilman Preston. All those in favor? Motion count. All right, item 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 70 offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Missouri City, amending rules regarding the discharge of weapons, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What this proposed ordinance does is brings our current ordinance regulating the discharge of firearms and other weapons, as well as the permitting of shooting events, brings it up to speed and in compliance with basically the state law, with the Texas legislature allows, how it allows municipalities to regulate those things. As of last year's legislative session, cities are no longer permitted to regulate the discharge of air guns at sport shooting ranges, and this proposed ordinance reflects that. The state law has also criminalized discharging a firearm in a public place or across a public road, and what this proposed ordinance does is essentially stays out of the state statute's way in that regard, with the assumption that law enforcement will enforce, enforce those things under, under the state law. Definitions are cleared up to, to kinda comport with the state law definitions and basically provide clearer and more easily to understand terms. And as far as the actual criminalization of discharging a firearm or other weapon, the mental state has been removed to enhance our enforcement mechanism. The current ordinance says a firearm could be discharged knowingly or intentionally, but the state law says we don't need to have that language in there. But even with all those changes, this proposed ordinance is, stays very true to the spirit of the current ordinance in, in the way we will actually go ahead and enforce that. Left intact are all the exceptions and defenses that were present in the current ordinance. And that's pretty much all I have to say about the discharge of firearms. The permitting, two important things were added, and that would be the waiver of liability for the city, and some insurance requirements are also added for those that would apply to conduct a shooting event within the city. And having said that, staff submits this proposed ordinance for your consideration, recommends its approval.
And I would assume that this is an unlawful discharge.
That is, sir, with the, uh, that's prosecution. It allows the discharge of firearms under Chapter 9 for self-defense and law enforcement purposes.
And the castle doctrine, right. The castle. And this also covers air guns, pellet guns, both rifles and pistols?
Yes, all sorts of air guns, meaning BB guns, paintball guns, and things like that.
Even paintball?
Yes.
Really?
As well as bows and arrows, which, under this proposed ordinance, would include crossbows and other weapons of that nature, and explosive weapons as well.
Zip guns, the ones made by 3D printers, which is new, that are literally eligible to fire.
Right.
So, it covers all of those, right? Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's the first of two readings.
So moved.
I'd like to...
Yes, sir. Mayor pro tem Ellencat, and second by Councilman Wyatt.
How does, from what I understand, the reason for this particular ordinance is because air guns have been offered, has been put into the...
That was the...
It recognized as part of the firearms, right?
And that was, right, that was added specifically in the last legislative session.
How does the state statute address carrying firearms in public buildings and municipalities and things of that nature?
In 2003, the state adopted a law that had, that began to restrict what governmental entities could do in regards to public facilities. Up until that point, governmental entities were free to regulate as property owners. At that time, they, they restricted that, but did allow two specific exceptions, one being municipal courts, and they did criminalize bringing a firearm into a municipal court. Also, they criminalized bringing them into public meetings of governmental facilities. That second one, though, does carry the requirement that a sign be posted notifying the persons of such prohibition for it to be effectively prosecuted. So, that...
Thirty-four oh six.
That is correct, and the state would have to prove up that that notice had been posted for that to have occurred. There are a few distinctions on those two. At municipal court, the court does have the authority to specifically authorize certain persons to bring handguns in in a concealed mechanism.
Like Michael, yeah.
But the, the cities do not have that same authority in regards to public meetings. So, in the event that sign is posted, with the exception of peace officers, there would not be the ability to provide certain exemptions such as court can do.
Have we ever looked into the possibility of placing a sign in this particular facility, making it a law against carrying firearms in here?
I do seem to recall discussion at one point, but in all honesty, I cannot recall if it happened at the council level or at the staff level.
I can't remember if it's on the door. Seemed like it was. I mean, it's very clear in the concealed handgun license laws that you're prohibited from carrying your gun, even though you're licensed. You cannot carry it to a polling place. You cannot carry it to a hospital. You cannot carry it into a bar, that there are at least a place that serves more than 60% of its revenue from alcohol, and you cannot carry it into school property. Those are, those are set by the state laws that regulate concealed handgun license.
Correct, and also private entities have their ability to regulate those as well.
And then any entity that actually posts the thirty-four oh six, the thirty-oh-six sign, they call it, on their business, and you've probably seen recently where in Houston there are some businesses that are being challenged because they don't, they're not one of those four or five that we just mentioned, but they have taken it upon themselves to post the thirty-oh-six sign on their front door. Now, what is unusual in the, in the concealed handgun license is that even here, we cannot prohibit our employees from having that gun in their car, even on the parking lot. There are no other business in the state of Texas with the exception of schools can prohibit an employee from having a gun in their car on their parking lot. They can prohibit them from carrying it inside their business, though, if they post a sign as an individual business owner, so...
Which gets back to my question. Have we entertained posting the sign, thirty-oh-six, if you will, that sign here in the council chambers?
I can't remember whether they're downstairs or not. I know that thirty-oh-six is at the, at the city center.
Yeah.
That's on all the doors at the city center.
And the city center does have a special provision because of the alcohol, and we, and in fact, we have two different alcohol licenses at the city center, and that, we've tried to clarify that. That initially caused confusion because there are two different signs that we're required to have because of the two different licenses.
We need to look. I think it's on the door.
Why can't we just, since we feel that way, why can't we just have a sign up there tomorrow?
We can.
So, oh, so can we do that?
And there may be, there may be on the door. I'm trying to remember whether they're on the outside doors that say that. Go down there and take a look and come back and tell me. For some reason, I'm thinking that it's on the door, but maybe, maybe I'm thinking that... The cell phone doors. It's not a big deal, but I agree. We don't want people in here carrying guns, that's for sure.
We can do a little bit more research on this if y'all want to know that, anyway.
And if I could clear...
Y'all can address this at a future work session. I got no heart saying that we already got a thirty-oh-six sign ordinance in place. So, I'm saying, why don't we just put the sign up here tomorrow, and so we don't, we can move on?
And, and again, it's not an ordinance because the state has preempted us in that regard, but we, of course, can do that sign.
There's a statue, there's a statue available.
Now...
If you agree with that, let's move forward with it. That's fine. It's one where if y'all want more discussion on it or more information, we put it on a future work session, but y'all are good with...
And I agree, let's just post it on the doors. I don't want people in here with guns either, even though...
And one thing I would like to clarify, that only applies to the use of this facility when it's being conducted as a place for a meeting, so there are...
Well, at least that's one place I can feel safe. There you go.
That's why I bring chat. No, we're fine with that. I think it's on the court building. I've probably seen it at the courts, too, because...
And, and the court scan is slightly different, under a different component.
Probably cell phone thing I saw down there. Okay, we'll get it on there then. Anyway, there was a motion and a second, and this is the first of two readings, so if we need to do anything between now and then, we'll vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Item 10C.
An ordinance amending Chapter 30 environment of the Missouri City Code, amending the regulation of discharges to the small municipal separate storm sewer system, providing a penalty, providing severability.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council.
This is the first of two readings as well.
In short, this is a revision of the city's stormwater management ordinance to accommodate the new requirements of the new permit as published by TCEQ. It modifies some of the best management practices that we had existing before. In short, they removed driver weather screening on outfalls and the service center stockpile area from the best managed practices. They added recycling programs, trash cleanup, training for illicit discharge, responding to illicit discharges, investigation and elimination of illicit discharges, inventory of construction sites, a guidance manual for post-construction stormwater controls, training for stormwater controls, contractor oversight, some sanitary sewer system evaluations, list of potential problem areas, and inspection and assessments of facilities to the requirements of best management practices. The other best management practices in the previous ordinance all stay the same.
Is there a motion? This is the first of two readings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ellencat, second by Councilman Smith. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, a resolutions, 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute and the city secretary to attest an interlocal agreement pertaining to storm water management between the City of Missouri City, Texas and certain political subdivisions owning stormwater facilities within or serving the City of Missouri City, Texas.
Is there a motion?
Move to the...
Councilman Wyatt made the motion.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Smith made the second. Any discussion? Not we vote. All those in favor?
We got a new guy sitting over here. We need to get, this is confusing stuff, so Scott can give him the five-minute breakdown of this.
Okay.
In short, the local utility districts in the city are members of the city's stormwater management program. The exceptions are Water Conservation Improvement District Number Two, which does not have a charter for stormwater control, and the Sienna districts, who at the time of the implementation were not considered in the urbanized area, and subsequently, they're moving on and doing their own program on that. But what this is, is the interlocal agreements that bring all these districts into the city's stormwater management program, and that is part of our permit. That was the previous agenda item on there.
And we all go together through this agreement to pay for that?
Yes, sir. We have the provision in this agreement to implement a fee for those utility districts. Prior to this, the previous agreement also had the ability to implement a fee. We did, had not charged one. We're looking at charging a $1,500 a year fee per district to help pay for this program.
Okay? Any other question? Not we'll vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. ElevenB.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute and submit a notice of intent, a stormwater management program, and a permit application fee to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and to take any and all other actions necessary to comply with the requirements of the Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, general permit number TXR 040000 issued on December 13, 2013.
Move to the...
Councilman Smith made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, a woman forward made the second. There's no other discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, city council announcements. The only announcement I have is that Thursday night is Mayor and Council, Fort Bend Mayor and Council's meeting at the Skeeter's Game. If you've not let Maria know whether you're coming or not, let her know, and a guest, if you wanna bring a guest. This is the only meeting that we allow guests to come because it's no real meeting, so... Only other announcement, and it is for you all's information, because I wanna stay on board and at least make you all aware of it, I am going to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Dallas, June 19 through the 23rd. It's the, it's the annual conference, and because it's in Dallas, and because I've never been, they waive the, they waive the fees to go, so, and I am paying my own transportation there, so. But I wanted you to know, be aware that I am going to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting.
And I probably can get you a free room at my daughter's house.
Huh?
I probably can get you a free room at my daughter's house.
Well, that is, the city is gonna pay my hotel, so that's all. But, anyway. Any other announcements? Welcome aboard, Chris. We don't have an executive session, right?
We do not.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chip.
Yes, sir. Have you got my report yet?